Okay, now we're recording. So we're going to begin our meeting. I'm calling to order the special city council meeting in City Crescent City, June 22, 2020. Just for the record, we are having technical difficulties live streaming to Zoom this evening. We are live to YouTube, I apologize. We are live here on Zoom. We will be taking public comment via email as well. We will post the meeting as after we have the recording uploaded and we will have it available for playback tomorrow. So with that, I'm going to ask our clerk if you would please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Fallman.
Here.
Councilmember Greenow.
Here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Mayor Protemkine.
Here.
And Mayor Inscore.
I am here. If you would please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We're going to have public comment. General public comment is available to any member of the audience joining us here via Zoom or via email at publiccomment@crescentcity.org. Any member is able to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or items that are on our agenda are permissible. However, the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on any non-agendized items. Those items may be referred to staff or future action, which could include being placed on a future agenda. So if you have public comment and you're with us via Zoom, if you would hit the raise hand button, we will call upon you. We did receive a couple of public comments via email and I'm going to ask our clerk to read those into our record first and then we will see if we have any other public comment this evening.
Yes, sir. The first one comes from Mr. Jeff McAdon. It's a public comment in support of law and order in Delmarque County and Crescent City. "We have all been inundated in recent weeks with mainstream media-driven sensationalism regarding the Black Lives Matter phenomenon. Those of us who exercise caution, discernment, and independent thinking realize that the incessant media coverage has more to do with ratings, ad revenue, and left-leaning politics than the actual subject at hand. The bulk of our American public, forced into isolation by the pandemic, constantly bombarded by televised yellow journalism and images of demonstrations, riots, and looting, have demanded change. The radicals of the left have chosen partial defunding of law enforcement or the outright elimination of community police entirely. Capitol Hill Autonomous Zone, CHAZ, Seattle, has become a poster child for this philosophy, with both the mayor of that city and the governor of Washington refusing to take action. Indeed, spineless populist liberal politicians throughout the United States, along with the Democrat-dominated US Congress, have all supported defunding and dismantling law enforcement as the chosen solution. One only need to look toward their model utopia in Seattle to see the results. The summer of love that the mayor of Seattle envisioned for the Antifa police-free zone has become a summer of rape. These leftist radicals have armed themselves with unregistered assault rifles and blockaded their zone with checkpoints to process anyone entering or leaving. This being done by so-called liberals who lobby to restrict access to registered firearms for increasing numbers of law-abiding citizens and to open the US borders to anybody who chooses to enter. The art posted on almost every wall in the street fair contains spray-painted slogans of violence and anarchy. Their chosen laws are ill-defined, but dispensed swiftly by mob beatings and recently by burning down an occupied law center. They have segregated by race and supported forced work crews conscripted by race. Their present warlord, a local Seattle rapper named Baz, claimed his position by violence and has secured it in the same way. The Capitol Hill Autonomous Zone has now become CHOC, Capitol Hill Occupied Protest. They dropped autonomous zone from the name because none of their members wants to work and the lawless nature of their summer of love precluded any outside support. Truckers would not make deliveries, emergency personnel and fire personnel would not respond, and police were not allowed to answer calls related to rape and battery. Thanks to support from the liberal government of Seattle, CHOC's portable toilets are once again being serviced by public sanitation workers and an endless supply of bean sprouts and tofu are delivered to hungry vegans. We in Delmarque County should stand resolutely against defunding measures. Days ago, the state of California released over 3,500 convicted felons from their prisons. Sacramento is in support of law enforcement defunding measures. I ask that a resolution be drafted by both our Delmarque County Board of Supervisors and our local city council of Crescent City, vowing to oppose implementation of any executive orders by the premier of the People's Republic of California, or legislation by the politburo of this state attempting to defund or hamper active law enforcement in Delmarque County and the city of Crescent City. We should continue to honor the courage and commitment of our first responders during this media-driven urban populist revolt and take a stand against leftist intrusions from our state government. In response to police defunding and lack of support from cowardly urban politicians, seasoned frontline law enforcement personnel throughout our country are resigning either in protest or in response to unrealistic local measures hampering their ability to do a job in a safe manner. Delmarque County cannot afford the loss of our law enforcement personnel. Indeed, we already constantly hemorrhage officers to larger and better-funded agencies. Instead of allowing state-defunding policies to dictate our actions, we should provide an annual retention bonus to encourage seasoned officers to remain in service to our county. This money could easily be diverted from our fat, bloated, and counterproductive Delmarque Unified School District. The county of Delmarque has long been ignored in favor of California's urbanized, densely-packed metropolitan enclaves of Los Angeles, Sacramento, San Diego, and the San Francisco Bay Area. The needs, desires, and attitudes of these sprawling liberal metroplexes are in sharp contrast to those of our local rural county, as they are in many other counties in the state of California. Socialist overregulation of business and industry has destroyed almost all free enterprise, displaced our workforce, and made government itself the only viable industry of Delmarque County. Perhaps it is time to once again revisit the vote to join the state of Jefferson's successionist movement. Perhaps we might simply form Delmarque into a state of its own. If the urbanized liberal state of California should choose defunding of law enforcement, then we can form our own autonomous zone, where the rule of law and order and the Constitution of the United States and the Bill of Rights reign supreme. A whirlwind of revolt has been unleashed in our nation's urban centers. Within weeks, Delmarque County and Crescent City will once again celebrate Independence Day. Much like the founding fathers of our country, we must all take a stand for what we believe to be is right. There is no longer any room for compromise or offense straddling. We either stand with the liberal urban centers and a descent into divisiveness and anarchy, or we stand with rural America, along with the foundation of law and order under the Constitution of the United States. What will your choice be this Fourth of July? Do any of you have the guts to take a stand? Respectfully, Mr. Jeff McAdon, resident of Crescent City, Delmarque County.
You're going to go ahead and read the other one, Robin?
Yes.
Please.
Okay, and this one was sent via email by Jacinda Murkey. I hope I'm saying her name right. She did indicate that this was directed toward Delmarque County supervisors and Dr. Raywell. But, "Delmarque County supervisors and Dr. Raywell, I have a question for you. Why does it seem you'd like to have no regard for the children in this county? According to the state's COVID-19 webpage, there have been zero deaths in California by someone under the age of 17. Good public policy would be to allow our children to live their lives normally. Children should not be required to wear a mask. Children should be allowed to play on playgrounds, and all children should be allowed to be involved in sports all summer. We should not be talking about social distancing, masks, ending group activities, or limiting classroom size or duration. Any policy regarding disrupting our children's lives is illogical and demonstrates how you are not using science to guide your decisions. Furthermore, there should be more transparency as to why public health is encouraging people to test weekly when they do not have any symptoms. Monetary gains by means of contact tracing should be made public. We know that Verily, the testing company that the county is using, is making millions off testing. It appears more and more that all COVID decisions are being based on budgets and money. I ask you not to throw our community members, especially our children, under the bus during this time. Your jobs and income are not more valuable than the rest of the communities. It is time to advocate against the state's money and power-hungry decisions." Thank you, Jacinda Murkey. And that's all I've received.
Okay. Do we have any public comment of those who are joining us via Zoom? If you've just arrived, we did get a little bit of a late start from technical reasons. And so, anyone joining us via Zoom, if you have a public comment, if you would please hit the raise hand button and we will acknowledge you during this time. I don't see any, so I'm going to close public comment and move on with our agenda. We do not have any ceremonial items this evening, but we do have a public hearing, and that is our fiscal year 2020-2021 budget and appropriations limit. And so, I am going to open up this public hearing and I will turn it to you first, Mr. Weir. And you and Ms. Lieber walk us through this however you feel best.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Inscore, members of the council. Yes, it was our pleasure to present to the council at the Budget Workshop kind of where we are in this year of uncertainties, as well as just the unknowns of what the future is going to hold. There were a lot of tough decisions placed before the council, and so I do appreciate the direction the council gave. But I also just want to reiterate that this isn't a typical budget that we're going to adopt this time of year and then not really revisit again until mid-year. As we discussed with the council, this budget is one that's going to come back to the council time and time again. And as we know more, we'll be able to make more informed decisions. We'll be able to make those decisions as early as we possibly can. So with that, Ms. Lieber has created a presentation that kind of goes through each of the different funds, goes through the direction given at that time, and really what's included in this first phase of what is this 2021 budget that we're in. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to our finance director, Linda Lieber.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to share my screen. Okay. So tonight, we are having the public hearing to adopt the fiscal 2020-21 budget for the city. What's on the agenda for this is, we would like you to open the public hearing, receive the staff report, receive public comment, close the public hearing. And then there are two resolutions that we would like the council to adopt. And I apologize, I didn't have the resolution numbers when I put this together. But the first one is 2020-48, and that is the Budget and Position Control. And the second is 2020-49 for the Appropriations Limit. So first, just to briefly review what we went over at the Budget Workshop. We are using conservative estimates. We are budgeting for all authorized positions and anticipated expenses, and our actual expenses typically end up lower than our budget. We monitor that closely and we report those to council monthly. Additional things to consider this year are, the revenue projections are extremely uncertain. A lot of this is based around when the economy really sort of recovers, when consumer spending gets back to normal, how long that will take, how long it will take for travel to get back to normal. So we're using some conservative estimates to try to project what that looks like for the rest of the year. But we are going to have to update those every few months throughout the year because we just don't know exactly what's going to happen yet. The expenses in most departments are reduced, some drastically, most notably the pool, as discussed at the workshop. This budget does not include the pool reopening, and we will discuss that in detail when we get into the general fund. However, even with reducing all of these expenses, all of the major funds are going to be budgeted to show in that deficit for the year. And in some cases, that means the projected fund balances are not sustainable long-term. So what that means is that this budget should really just be considered Phase 1, and there will be more changes to come. So the process that we use to develop the budget, first, we get the budget requests from each department throughout the city. And the city manager and I review all of them. It is normal every year that the requests come in and they outpace what we think the revenues will be. So then we meet with each department, sometimes multiple times, to try to make revisions and come up with a proposed budget to be presented to the council and the public at the workshop. At the workshop, we get input from the public and the council provides direction. Then we have a public hearing, which is tonight, for the budget to be adopted. And then the council will be asked to consider various budget amendments throughout the year. So at the workshop, the council gave direction, first of all, to go ahead and make all the recommended budget cuts that we had discussed with the departments. The pool currently is budgeted to remain closed, and that's simply because we don't know a date yet when it will be able to open. We will be evaluating that frequently in terms of looking at the city's tax revenues, and we will also be looking for other partnerships or grants that may be able to help us. Some decisions were made about staffing. We are removing the part-time deputy fire chief position. The person who was in that position has retired, but will still be helping the department as a volunteer. We will be removing the part-time recreation lead position. It was already vacant, and it just doesn't make sense to budget for that position until we are able to have special events again. The seasonal positions for parks maintenance, we are going to keep those, they are currently filled. We're going to keep those through the end of this season, which is September. But at this point, we are not budgeting for them to come back next season, although hopefully we will be able to add that back later. There were no employee furloughs at this time, although we have been very transparent that that is something that can be discussed if needed in the future. The negotiations with all of the employee associations, all of those MOUs expire on June 30 of this year. But the associations have all agreed to put those on hold for now because things are so uncertain. So the current agreements will just continue. And any employee vacancies that happen throughout the year will be evaluated on a case-by-case basis. If it's a position that can be left vacant for a while, we probably will do that. There were a few minor additions added at the workshop in the general fund. The council directed us to go ahead and continue with the downtown restroom and the flower baskets, advertising for the RV park, the lab analysis for the sewer fund, and then the water fund was approved. Two important projects were discussed and approved, the dynamic water model, which will help us make future capital decisions, and Phase 1 of the meter replacements. So there's a lot that is not going to be in this year's budget, at least this Phase 1 budget. Almost all travel and training is cut. Sister City is not currently budgeted. Parts and supplies and contract services in almost every department are reduced to a pretty much bare-bones budget. We are not currently budgeting for replacing equipment. Maintenance and CIP is being deferred unless it's grant-funded, as far as the general fund goes. We are not budgeting at this time to make an additional purse payment, the way we have in the last couple of years. We are not currently budgeted for ordinance updates, a second canine officer, or legal services for code enforcement, except the portion that is grant-funded, or implementation of the fire department master plan. Those are all things that will be brought back to the council on a case-by-case basis, but they are not currently in the budget. Some things that were started in this year or budgeted in this year are being carried over into the proposed budget. The alarm for the city fire station, we were not able to get that installed this year, so we're proposing it to be carried over, and that will be using our MAP funds because that's a risk prevention. The countywide polling that is already underway is carried over to complete that process. There are several grant and donation-funded projects that are going to be carried over. And the completion of the new city website, which is nearing completion, that will need to be finished after June 30. And then the CIP projects that were already authorized and budgeted but not finished yet are being carried over. So in the general fund, the proposed revenues, 4.8 million, and expenditures, 5.6 million, giving us a net deficit of just under 800,000. So where will that leave us? Our last audit showed a fund balance of just under 2.6 million. We are projecting that this year we will end up just over a million. We won't know the exact numbers until we can close the books, which takes a few months, but that's what the current projection is, and it's conservative. The proposed budget will be a further reduction of the 791,000. If all of that was spent, it would leave us with a fund balance of just over 300,000. With a budget-to-actual difference of another 300,000, which is fairly typical, that would leave us at about 600,000. Obviously, that's not where we want to be. It is well below our target of 25%, but this is, again, just a Phase 1 budget. This is what will get us going for the next few months as we continue to look at other options. As Mr. Weir said, we will continue to evaluate and update throughout the year. We are planning on every couple of months. If the revenue projections improve, which we are hoping they will, those revenues will go toward increasing that fund balance and then also may allow us to add in additional expenses. I know one thing that is very important to a lot of people in the community and the council and staff is to look at reopening the pool as soon as we can. However, if the revenue projections don't improve, we will need to look at making additional cuts. In the housing authority, revenues are proposed at just under 3.8 million, and operating expenditures are just slightly above that for a net of 84,000 deficit. That's really just because of, on this next slide, the additional funding. So HUD is providing some additional resources for the housing authority to handle the COVID-19 emergency. That revenue has already been received in this fiscal year, and most of it will be carried over and spent down in the next year. And that's going to be used to implement things, to provide additional services, and allow for social distancing in the office. So the housing authority, the last audit, the fund balance was just over 132,000. Projection for this year is about 388,000, and then the proposed budget for next year would get it down to just over 300,000. In the RV park, and this is another area, just like the general fund, where the revenues are very uncertain. Obviously, the RV park is completely dependent on what's happening with travel. So revenues, we're currently projecting 189,000. That's about 50% of normal, and we are hoping that that will increase relatively quickly. Again, this budget was developed just before the order was lifted for the short-term rentals. So hopefully, this will increase pretty soon. Operating expenditures, about 300,000 for a net of a deficit of almost 117,000. So we will be monitoring the reservations and what's happening with the projected occupancy of the RV park and hope to come back with an improved revenue outlook for the RV park. Working capital at the last audit was about $158,000. Projected for this, at the end of this year, is 137,000. So if the revenues really are only 50% of normal, that would bring working capital down to about 20,000. Again, not where we want to be, but we'll be monitoring closely and updating. In the sewer fund, we have included an estimate that revenues will decrease by about 20%, and that's largely due to businesses that have been fully closed for some time and also will be potentially reopening only partially or opening slowly. Operating expenses, 3.4 million. There's going to be new transfers into the CIP fund of 450,000, plus carryover of unspent CIP and our debt service payment, which gives us a net deficit of about 1.8 million. So in the sewer fund, working capital has increased over the last several years. However, that's mostly because there are some large CIP needs that still need to be completed. So our long-term projection, once we figure in completing that CIP, does show a structural deficit. So our priority is to stabilize that fund. First, move to contract operations, which was done earlier this year. Then to analyze options for the lab, which that's included in this budget. Updating our long-term CIP plans, which Jacob's Engineering is already under contract to do that. And then finally, we will need to do a rate study. So working capital for the sewer fund at the last audit was 6.3 million. We're projecting 5.9 million at the end of this fiscal year. And then with the proposed budget, if everything was spent, it would bring the working capital down to just over 4 million. In the water fund, we are projecting, again, a 20% decrease in revenue, which gets us to the 2.4 million, operating expenses of 2.2, a carryover of some unspent CIP from this year, and our debt service payment gets us to a net deficit of just over 729,000. This budget does include the dynamic water model, which will assist us in making our CIP plans, and the first year of meter replacements, as we discussed at the workshop. The current meters, a lot of them are extremely old, and some of them are not functioning correctly, which means that we are not billing correctly. So the meter replacements will help with that, and they will also allow us to move toward automated meter reading, which will make us way more efficient and also provide some more information to customers. Long-term projections show that the water fund is in a pretty good position and even has enough working capital to complete some CIP without grants if needed. The working capital at the last audit was 2.5 million. We are projecting about 2.3 at the end of this year. Our proposed budget with the deficit of just under 730,000 would bring that down to about 1.6 million. There are also many other funds included in the budget document in the staff report. We typically discuss the five major funds that we just went through, but there are lots of other funds involved in the city. Capital improvement funds, internal service funds. Internal service is when one department of a city provides services to city departments, for example, IT. We have special revenue funds like grants, and then fiduciary funds where we're setting aside money for future liabilities. All of the funds are presented in the budget packet. There's quite a few, so I wasn't going to go through them one by one, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And then the other items that need to be considered tonight, the position control, which is included in the budget document, I believe it's the last page or maybe close to the end. It is going to eliminate the unfunded positions because we do have a policy that if a position is authorized... because we do have a policy that if a position is authorized, we have to budget for it. So the positions that we've removed from the budget are also going to be removed from our position control. But just like the budget, the position control can be updated by the council at any time, and will be as soon as we can. And then the appropriations limit, that's sometimes called the GAN limit. That has to do with a constitutional requirement to select which factors we are going to use to calculate our appropriations limit for next year. So what that means is, there's a state constitution amendment that says that we can only appropriate, meaning spend, a certain amount of tax revenue year after year, and it increases based on population growth and also based on inflation. The council does have some choice about which factors to use, although there's only really two to choose from. So they're listed in your packet. Basically, we're recommending to use the state CPI factor for inflation and the city population growth for our population factor. So the next steps for the public hearing. We are requesting, after you take public comment and have any discussion or questions, that you would adopt the two resolutions. And then we are already making plans for our first budget updates, which would be just a report out at the second meeting in July with preliminary data from our first and second quarters. And then we are anticipating our first actual budget change should be the second meeting in August. The state is also planning to do their first budget amendment in August, so hopefully that will line up well with ours. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay. Thank you, Sliver. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Sliver? Nope. Okay. Well, then, why don't I give you another chance here. Let's go ahead and open up and see if we have any public comment. Did we receive anything via email in regards to the budget? All right. See any public comment from those who are joining us via Zoom this evening? If so, if you would, please hit the raise hand button, and we will acknowledge you and allow you to provide your public comment. All right. Seeing no public comment, then I will close public comment. And we have taken our staff report. Public hearing was opened. Then if there's not any other discussion from the council, then I'm going to close the public hearing and then bring it back to the council for consideration of the two resolutions. One, for the actual budget adoption, and then the other for the appropriations limit.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution number 2020-48, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City adopting the annual budget for the 2020-21 fiscal year.
I have a motion from Councilmember Follman. Do I have a second?
A second, though.
A second from Mayor Protem Kime. Would you please pull the vote?
Yes, Councilmember Follman.
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow.
Yes.
Councilmember Wright.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kime.
Yes.
And Mayor Inscore.
Yes. Thank you. And now for the consideration of the appropriations limit and the resolution associated with that.
I move that we adopt resolution number 2020-49, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, selecting the annual adjustment factors for the calculation of the 2020-2021 appropriations limit for the City of Crescent City.
I have a motion for Councilmember Greenow. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Wright. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Follman.
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow.
Yes.
Councilmember Wright.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kime.
Yes.
And Mayor Inscore.
Yes, very good. I want to, on behalf of the council, express my appreciation to Ms. Sliver, Mr. Weir, to all of our staff for all the hard work in trying to give us the very best information possible in what are very uncertain times. And we certainly appreciate all the hard work that has gone into this budget, and not only that, all the hard work that's ahead to try to manage this budget. And so, on behalf of the council, we just want to, I want to tell you how much we appreciate the work that's gone into this and the work that is ahead. So we certainly will have to do this together as a team. So thank you. Good work, staff.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would just also, if I may, like to say thank you to the council. I know this has not been an easy budget discussion to have, so I certainly appreciate your support.
Thank you. All right. We're going to go ahead and move on with our agenda, and that would be with the consent calendar. You have some items on consent, the council meeting minutes from June 8th, standard volunteer RV park host agreement, and volunteer RV park host eligibility criteria, Caltrans ADA project agreements, and the associated resolutions. With that, the budget to actual for May 2020, the local early action planning grant, and the resolution with that, agreement with California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation for lab testing services, and a temporary assignment of Shoreline RV Park resident camp hosts to the Public Works Maintenance Manager, and amending the fiscal 2020-21 budget and the resolution associated with that. Counsel, any considerations or questions regarding anything on consent? All right, seeing not any public comment on anything that is on our consent calendar this evening. For those of you joining us on Zoom, if you would hit raise hand button if you have anything. We did not receive anything via email. All right, we'll close public comment then, and I'll bring it back to the council for consideration of our consent calendar this evening.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Mayor Protem Kime. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wright. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Follman.
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow.
Yes.
Councilmember Wright.
Yeah.
Mayor Protem Kime.
Yes.
And Mayor Inscore.
Yes. All right, moving on, we have one item of new business, COVID-19 pool closure refunds for annual passes and punch pass extension. Mr. Weir?
Thank you, Mayor Inscore, members of the council. So I'd like to ask our Recreation Director, Holly Wint, to join us, and she can explain the staff recommendation, some of the options to the council. And then, as promised at the budget workshop, this will be our first full update with kind of what's going on with the engagement with our pool stakeholders and some of the conversations that we're already starting to have. So that'll turn it over to Ms. Wint.
Good evening, Mayor Inscore and council members. It's nice to see you again. I missed last week, and it's good to see you all happy and smiling. Right now, I'd just like to take a moment and share my screen with you. If that's okay. Put this up. Right? All right. Can you guys see my screen? Yep. All right. So just a brief little reminder, on March 16th, we had to close Front End Pool because of the pandemic and local safety concerns. And then, as Ms. Sliver just went over, City Council had decided with the budget to close the pool, and we would have bi-weekly updates. And with that, it put staff in conversations about refunds and extensions based on the various passes, punch passes, locker rentals, pool rentals, and lessons that people had paid for services to be provided during the closure, as well as services that they were hoping to get during this closure, and now that it's extended. So Ms. Sliver and I looked at this, along with Sarah Enos, and we really looked at the two options that we have. It would seem simple just to refund everyone, but these are varied services with different payment options for it. So we've put them into two categories. One is just a refund category, and the other is an extension. So I'll talk about the refund section to begin with. Annual passes are purchased with a one-year date. People can use them as much as they want within that date, and they expire, their annual passes. There's the youth and senior and the adult rates. And the majority of these passes are purchased in December. So when calculating what's the most equitable way to refund this, it was very simple. If we just refunded 75% at this time, because they were able to use it for three months, then we wouldn't have to go back and reevaluate every time we were looking at extending or bringing it back, what that would be to the patron. Similar with the locker rentals, very easy to calculate those refunds. Pool rentals and special events, quickly refundable. And lessons was something that took a little conversation between Sarah Enos and myself, and we really thought that refunds would be the best practice for this, because it's easy to say, here's your refund for that service, but also because the implementations of lessons will look very different when we reopen. And so at that time, we'd really want to educate the parents and the children about what lessons would look like in order to see if that's something that they wanted to do, rather than a lot of times, parents just say, I just want to sign up for the next lesson. We wanted to be very honest and transparent, give those refunds, and then enter in a new agreement with patrons when they came in to reuse the pool when we opened. And those are very simple, kind of easily calculated. When we look and talk about punch passes, this becomes very difficult, and each punch pass holder has their own unique situation. Punch passes are 10 visits or 50 visits. Sometimes people buy multiple punch cards at the same time, and they tend to all have different expiration dates. So we would have to evaluate each one of those on their own level, and there's hundreds of them. So with the varying dates and the varying use and the varying quantity that each pass holder would have, for this, it seems simpler just to give an extension to punch pass holders, so that they could get the same value for what they're getting. Finding, determining a rate for that is much more difficult to find an equitable refund for them. So, for example, if a pass punch holder had a month left and they had 10 visits, they would be extended a month after we reopen. And we would go through and meet with them and update each of those passes to be equitable for what they've lost during the closure once we reopen. And I know that sounds, can sound confusing, but we're hosting a Zoom meeting this Wednesday, a community meeting, so that we can help communicate with the community about what that looks like, based on your guys' decisions, and answer questions. And be able, whatever the decision is made, we're able to walk them through it and provide an opportunity for them to come into the pool and ask questions. I also wanted to touch base on the research that we've been doing regarding some of the questions that came up in the budget meeting. One was on pool rates and grants and opportunities. We've looked into that. We've really looked at about 10 to 15 different pools, their rates, how they maintain, what are some of the resources they look into in grants. I know specifically, it was asked about the YMCA and Grants Pass. We looked into that. They require a membership, a flat membership, but that membership does not include exercise classes, swim lessons, and additional activities. It becomes extremely expensive for a family to, say, get lessons and exercise and do all those activities that we provided our community pool. And we've also reached out, and we haven't heard back from them to ask some more specific questions, so I want you guys to know we're still working on that. I think the most exciting thing that has happened is we have a stakeholder group of people who participate in the pool and have participated and paid in the pool for years. They would like to call themselves a community action group. We met with them last Thursday. They're committed to meeting weekly and advocating for the pool, and they're going to be great team members in finding sustainable opportunities to help the pool not only get open again, but stay open. We're living in a time where things weren't what we thought they were going to be four months ago, and so we're really looking at a sustainable future for the pool. And so we're excited to meet with them again this week as well. So with that quick update and information, I just want to go back and say that we would like to recommend refunds for annual pass holders, locker rentals, lessons, and special events, and extensions for punch pass holders, and extending based on how many months that we are closed. So with that, does anyone have any questions?
All right. Any questions for Ms. Wint?
I do. You said that in Grants Pass that they pay for a flat membership. What does that provide to a person?
Access to the YMCA as a whole and the pool, and like lap lessons and recreational swim. It does not include any lessons, anything with an instructor or any of those group activities. And their lessons are significantly more than what we currently charge. And we're looking to hear back from them. More details. They function with a lot of donations from their community, and we kind of want to get an idea of how much are their donations and what that looks like.
Okay. Other questions?
I mean, I'm just curious about, like, is there no option for refunding punch passes? I get the equity issues involved with it. But I mean, if I had a punch pass, I might be looking at this and say, why don't I just get the money back for it?
Um, it's, there are so many, Mr. Follman. This was more of just the amount of time and energy and to try and calculate. So say someone had a $50 punch pass, they use 35 of those. No, they use, like, they have 35 left, but they only had a month left on their expiration. So how would you calculate? They had more passes than days left. How are we going to calculate that refund to be equitable and make sense? It just got really confusing trying to figure out how to do that.
There's just too many one-off scenarios where you can't really develop a broad rate to say, okay, I get it now. Okay.
About a couple, a couple hundred of them.
Yeah.
That begs the question, for your stakeholders group, should punch passes ever expire?
Well, a lot of questions have come up from, you know, people who have been swimming in the pool for a long time, and they have some similar questions. They're really looking at punch passes versus monthly passes. Should passes expire or not? So this is going to be a great team to work with. Mr. Weir and I had a good over hour and a half conversation with them. So we're going to get some, and get some really honest feedback and good support for whatever changes we talk about or bring back to you guys.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments?
Mayor Inscore, I can just add to that, just briefly. This is, this is an opportunity for the city to look at this pool again. Take a look at the master plan, engage with this now community group, and then also really try to focus on how do we make this pool sustainable? Because this isn't the first time that this question has come up, you know? And I know you have a lot of history with the pool as well. And so, like, now, we have to look not only at getting the pool back open right now, but how do we make it sustainable for the years to come? And really look at that as our ultimate long-term goal, because this community is, this pool is such an asset to this community, and it needs to be a sustainable one.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, anything else? Any other input or questions to give to staff?
Have we approached the county at all since we have had these, started having these conversations concerning the possibility of them partnering with us in the funding of the pool?
I have spoken to Mr. Shulina, County CIO, about this particular item. And, you know, they're not in the best financial situation either, dealing with some of the COVID-19. no, they're not in the the best uh financial situation uh either dealing with some of the the COVID nineteen crisis and and some of the the deficit budgets that they have with the with the jail and and whatnot. And so he's he's facing a lot of challenges. Um, so it's 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 really gonna have to be that community effort to go uh to go to the board supervisors and say that this is that this is a priority. Because I think from uh from Mr. Serena's standpoint, and you know, just like ours and in balancing these priorities, he he has his hands full uh with his budget. And so it's gonna, it's gonna take some of that uh that direction from the board.
No, it makes it makes sense that it it's going to take a concerted effort by their board to actually budget that and make it a priority for them. So.
And I will just say that that uh before we even face um the the budgetary constraints that both the city and county are facing now. Uh, uh, coming out of the pool master plan, uh, we did have meetings and talk about this. And there was not, um, there was not at that point in time, um, a a sense that they felt that this was something that they could do. Um, you know, in our initial conversations because of their own budgetary constraints even pre-COVID. So, um. Yeah, I mean, it's something we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to look at. Um, and you know, we 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 lived for a long time with uh this, the a portion of this uh annual deficit being covered with grant funding. And and it kind of lured uh lulled us into this sense of, you know, we can, we can continue to cover this cost. You know, we were, we were covering, I mean, you you only have to go back, what, four years? And we we were supplementing, I I think a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is the number that comes to my head. I that may not be the exact number, maybe one seventy-seven or something. But you know, of CBDG uh money um to supplement the pool. Uh, and with the changing of the regulations of of what what those monies, that grant money can be used for, um, we started um incurring the entire cost of that operation. So in a sense, because those are public funds, right? I mean, those are, those are, those are grant money that that is. So in a sense, there was a community uh contribution by, just like there's a community contribution in in doing the storm brain drain project on Front Street. Because those are tax dollars that provided these grant monies in CDVG that then are leveraged to help our community. So there was a sense of that uh in an indirect way. Um, but that's gone and it's not coming back. And so if we don't create some some new partnerships um and some long-range strategies uh for this pool. Um, and I'm, and I'm a big pool proponent, have been since day one. Uh, and and my family personally uses the pool. Um, but this is an unsustainable asset as it stands today. We we don't have the the financial means to continue to run because it's gonna be more expensive five years from now than it is today. We cannot, we're we're gonna be approaching a half a million dollars a year uh to supplement it out of the general fund to operate that pool. Um, I I just don't see that as sustainable. Uh, we need to take that pool master plan, we need to build partnerships and we need to communicate very clearly to the to the community. We're not just talking about reopening the pool right now because of COVID nineteen. Um, I'm just gonna say what needs to be said and it's not popular and it's not what I want. We need to start communicating to the community. Are we ever going to reopen this pool, given the financial cost associated with doing this? Because if if the worst-case scenario plays out and we have no reserves left after all of this, which I mean, we're talking about maybe being down to to three hundred thousand dollars left in reserves. I don't see a strategy that says all of a sudden our coffers are gonna get replenished and we can continue to to provide this service alone. Um, that's the harsh reality. It's not what I want. But that is our, I mean, how many employees in other departments do we have to lay off to come up with four hundred some odd thousand dollars? What services do we stop offering? Um, these are really unpopular topics, but maybe, maybe that is one of the things that comes out of this COVID conversation is that we have to have a really hard community conversation. And I'm very thankful for this group that 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 uh Ms. Went, Mr. Weir are meeting with. Uh, maybe they're gonna come up with some solutions for us and a strategy that really helps us. Um, but as unpopular as it is, we're not just talking about reopening this year. I think that we have to start talking about, are we reopening, period? Um, so I I hate to be the bearer of bad news considering we started out telling dad jokes while waiting on IT and and laughing and, but this is no laughing matter. It's really serious. And I care about this for our community's sake. Um, but good work building those those connections, you guys. Um, thank you for doing that. Um, and let us know how we can help.
Well, can I say one more thing?
Sure, yeah.
Um, Eric, thank you for having the conversation with Jay Serena about the pool. And I I understand we've talked about this in the past, but I'm gonna be honest, it's all about priorities. The city has made it a priority to keep this pool open for the people of this county. And there's a very large percentage of the people who come to the pool are who are from the county. And I I think that the county needs to get serious about this. Um, th- this is a service to our county that could possibly go away if we don't find a way to fund it.
True.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna be honest. You find a way to fund things that are priorities. And so if the county wants to make it a priority, they will find it in their budget to fund it or to help fund it. So I would like to urge the community, if this is something they really want to see, they need to get a hold of their supervisor as well. Um.
I agree.
This is, we we can talk and talk and talk, but um it's the people who can really get this to 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 move in the right direction, I think. Um.
Well, and I think this stakeholder group is gonna help move that conversation forward, Mr. Greenow. I think that that's really important and their engagement is crucial to doing this. Um, because I don't think it's gonna get done just by, um, you know, ten elected officials or staff. I think that, I think the community really needs to to follow the lead of this engagement group and and be vocal about what their priorities are. Um, they certainly are telling us it's a priority, but we have limited assets or resources to keep this asset open. We need help.
And it's not for lack of trying on our part. We've, we've been trying to make the effort to communicate with the county about this and tell them, you know, hey, this is a problem. This is, this is an issue that that we feel very strongly about. And, you know, you you can only talk so long.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
I think that I, having taken this job as Director of Recreation, one of the most exciting things was going to be working with the pool and the wonderful events and opportunities that come out of it. But after diving into the pool master plan, the challenge of articulating what you have talked about, Mr. Inscore to the rest of the community seemed daunting. But Ms. Lever's graph that shows how much the city has cared and invested into the pool all these years um really shows that if we could, we would, it, we just can't and we need help. And we need the support of the community and the stakeholders get that. And they, they're very passionate about it and they understand and and that's what we need. We need people to help advocate for the pool, be on just city staff and and you all. And so I'm really hopeful and I'm excited about it. Sometimes out of closures and things like that come wonderful opportunities where we can get sustainability and that's what we're working for. So.
Thank you. Good work. Okay, um, I guess we've been talking, I don't, do we have any, any public comment regarding the uh the question of offering um these refunds for the the uh annual passes and the extensions for the punch passes? Any public comment this evening? Okay, then I'll, uh. Was there for a second? All right. Yes, I see, uh, I see Tina. Uh, Mr. Were, you wanna open up her mic, please? Do you get it?
Hello?
Here.
Do I say this is uh Suzuki, her husband?
Oh, it's good to have you today. Thank you.
Um, I was wondering, because uh the annual passes, uh, in December, you, your pool usually have like a sale on the passes. So is it based to, do they have records of how much people paid for that? Because I know money's tight and stuff, because some people pay full price, some people pay um, you know, the holiday amount for the lives and things like that. So annual passes, so I didn't know that was being calculated. Just, you know, because I know that budget. So.
Yes, we absolutely have um each person and when they purchased, purchased it and how much they paid for it. So those are gonna be really easy calculations for each of you, for us to be able to provide that refund.
Okay, does that also include that credit for the time the pool was closed?
Yep. So we'll take, we'll take the amount that you use. So if you purchased it in December, you were had access to the pool for approximately three months. So whatever the fee that you paid for that price, if you paid for the sale price, you would get seventy-five percent of that back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, any other public comment? Okay. Okay, um, we will uh, we'll bring it back to the council, then we'll close public comment. And uh, we're looking for a a direction. So if there is consensus to, um, do we need, uh, should we take, since we're actually making a financial decision, shouldn't we probably take this as a motion, Martha?
Yes, motion, great.
All right. So I'm looking for a motion to uh to give staff direction to do the refund of the annual passes and to extend the punch pass cards.
Um, I move that we refund. Are we, are we also going to refund like the locker rentals, the lessons, the egg hunt annual? I mean, there's a a bunch of different things in here that people have purchased. I mean, we're just talking about a couple of things if we're talking about the pool passes and annual pass.
So, yeah, it's, it's refunding cool passes, locker fees, locker rental fees, um, lessons and uh special events and uh rentals. And extensions for punch passes.
I I think that's prudent. I mean, the whole facility is closed down. Nobody has access to it. We should definitely be refunding all of these, these things.
All right. And then would that be your motion that we just refund the things that Ms. Went just identified?
Absolutely.
All right. I have a motion from Councilmember Greeno. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Councilmember Fallman. Would you please pull the vote?
Yes, Councilmember Fallman?
Yes.
Councilmember Greeno?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kine?
Yes.
And Mayor Inscore.
Yes. All right. Very good. Thank you, staff. Appreciate that. Um, uh, look forward to uh hearing back about the engagement group and their ideas and and what, how we can be a part of moving this discussion forward. Um.
Can I say one more thing? I really do think it's gonna take a a lot of public outreach. It's gonna take a lot of advocacy on the part of the community and just people to be at the right meetings and 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 talk. Um.
Yep, I agree.
You can't just sit back and and expect it to get better. I I hate to say it that way. But uh, if you care about this pool, I I really hope that people get engaged and um start letting their their opinions be known about it.
And I'd like to encourage anyone listening, uh, hearing this, if they feel passionate about it, they can reach out to me um and share their story and uh and reach out. And I'd love to connect with them as well. So I really hope that that people care and I'm here for any of them that want to talk as well.
I I really do believe we can come up with a solution if we put our collective heads together. So.
All right. Don't have any legislative matters, Mr. Were? You have any uh a- anything that you want to uh brief us on this evening before we close?
Just a couple of uh of real quick things. Uh, so obviously, since we've adopted the budget, the motels have opened to fifty percent. They're set to go to a hundred percent this Friday. So obviously, as those things start to take place, that changes the revenue picture and I don't know if any of you noticed this weekend, but it was uh, it was pretty busy uh in town. So we do expect the revenues to uh to go up. So it'll be hopefully a good update when we have some more of that information. Uh, with that, as businesses are starting to open up, uh, the uh, the county actually opened up today and we're looking at opening up City Hall uh to the public uh this coming Monday. So we're submitting our plans to uh to public health. And uh, that should occur this coming Monday, which will be June twenty-ninth. Uh, still, a lot of staff are still working remotely. We're still uh obviously heavily uh engaged in physical distancing and all those protocols. The governor came out with the mask order statewide now, so face coverings are required statewide. So if you do come into City Hall, you will be required to wear a mask and there's only gonna be one person allowed uh in the lobby uh at a time. And so we'll have a, have a way to uh to sign that and make sure that people are aware. So those are those are some of the uh, the the big items that are uh, that are gonna be taking places as this situation just continues to evolve. Uh, case counts are on the rise again. Over hospitalizations are are still down. And so this is just gonna be a very fluid situation as we watch the the outcomes of of the country really reopening and starting to see some of those ramifications. Other than that, uh, this is our, hopefully our last meeting uh before the fourth. So we do have the uh 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 different sort of Fourth of July. And I think uh Mayor Inscore is gonna talk a little bit about that. That definitely something to look forward to on that front as we move uh, as we move into the uh end of the summer season.
Okay, I'll just, um, I'm just gonna throw up um this um slide, I guess. This is the uh, for those of you who haven't heard, the, one of the things that, there's two things that are really happening during the um Fourth of July weekend. Uh, one is a scavenger hunt. Um, there are going to be twelve hometown heroes. Those have been nominated and they, they, uh, they're, they will be, um, their picture and information uh will be uh around Delark County at different historic sites. And so it would be a family type of thing where you get in your car and you, or I guess if you're adventuresome and you're a bicyclist or whatever, and you go to these areas and you have a little tally sheet, you identify and you find all of these hometown heroes. And you also find out some information about some historical sites uh all around our community. Uh, that's one thing that will be going on. And then the other is the decoration um contest. Um, and that uh, that is going to be also countywide and there'll be a daytime award, a nighttime award. So for people who have lights and all that, uh, there's gonna be homes as residential as well as as businesses. So those are two things that are happening. And I know that the, as we were um, uh, kind of prepping while we were having technical difficulties, I'm gonna stop sharing. Uh, Chief Griffin was uh showing off the the prize for the Best in Show. And so Chief, if you're still here and you wanna show that again, because this is directly related to the uh decoration contest, the Best in Show uh will The Best in Show will receive a championship belt that is customized for the 2020 Best in Show Decoration Contest. So Chief, go ahead and put that out for us one more time, if you would. There it is. You win that, you can wear that around town and let everybody know that you are the Best in Show. Anyway, so I'm very thankful for Chief Griffin, Chief Gillespie for going into, to making that possible for our community. Thank you for all the people who have been working to, to work to make this happen. Community people, Chamber of Commerce people. So anyway, excited about that. If you need any other information, you can contact Cindy Bosberg at the Chamber of Commerce and she will be happy to answer any of your questions. That's all I've got. You're muted.
Still.
Hey, we almost made it all night with somebody, without somebody trying to talk while muted. So we can't ever have a meeting where that doesn't happen at least once. I'm just thankful it wasn't me for the third time.
Uh, so just one other quick update. So I want to thank the community. The community was contacted last week in regard to the, the polling for a public safety tax measure and whether there would be support or not. So we do have some real preliminary data on that that's starting to come in. I'm going to reach out to the council and as we discuss that. But it's just a, a very important time as we're facing these, these tremendous, you know, cuts and loss of revenue. And so looking at some of those measures that can, can help with that and make us just more resilient as a, as a city. So we're not as affected by, by some of these situations that we get into with the pandemic. And we're all of a sudden forced to make these drastic cuts. I think definitely trying to keep it, you know, as resilient as we can here in Delnart County and keep the money here locally to our governments is, is something that will be a good discussion to have in the future. I know there was a doodle poll and we're going to get with the county here in the next week or so and really discuss the next steps and which way we want to go with that.
Okay, counsel, anything that anybody needs, needs to or would like to report out this evening before, before we close? All right, then we will be back together unless, unless something happens that requires us to be together sooner. We will certainly be back together July 6th. And stay tuned for anything that might change. Because in these days with the, the changing things that seem to come down at us sometimes on a daily basis, we may, we may be back sooner. We've already had more meetings since we have been virtual than we normally have. So, but that is also a good thing because being able to get together for a meeting, especially on a short notice, is a lot easier in this format than it is in a live, in-person format. And I will just say, because some, I had a community member ask me about it today, that, how I felt about meeting this way. And my, my observation was that in many ways, we've had a greater level of engagement from our public meeting via Zoom than we did in person at Flynn Center. Whether or not that means that this is a better format or not is really not the point. But we certainly have had more public engagement and I'm thankful for that. So I hope that that continues regardless of what our format is. All right, with that then, if nobody has anything, I will say good night. Heidi, be careful driving Baxter's car home. Please be safe. And look forward to seeing you when you get home. The rest of you, please stay, stay safe, stay healthy. And to the community, remember, take advantage of our, of our testing. If you have not, please take advantage of that. It's a, it's a simple process and it's there available for you Monday through Friday. They're at the high school. I know that, that one day this coming week, it's actually going to be out at Redwood School, I believe. So, but get on the website and it'll tell you everything you need to know, need to know, project baseline. All right, with that, night everyone.